Let me say a few things here before we start this. There are few issues. Those of you who have been in town, there was the mosquitoes that brought more people than you can possibly imagine. There was the leash law that people nearly lost property rights to because of the leash law. There have been nuclear concerns about Raytheon, and then there has been where we can walk dogs. And I appreciate the fact that this is an important issue to many people. Let me state, as I did Tuesday night, this is a bylaw article. This isn't an open meeting law article. This isn't a gee, we wish we could have better meetings, we wish boards got along with each other. This is not a personal issue. This is whether or not the town of Andover, we as voters, want to add to our bylaws the ability for residents in the town to walk their dogs in the Spring Grove Cemetery. Period. Does everyone understand what's before us in the warrant? Because if that's not what you want to talk about, I'm going to stop you. Okay? And I just want everybody to understand, good people can disagree, many have, and we're going to hash it out tonight. So, Mr. Salafia, please. Article 82.
Yes, Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article 82 as printed in the warrant.
Article 82 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Sandy Dearborn, Mrs. Dearborn.
Yes, okay. Hi, everybody can hear me. My name is Sandra Dearborn, Maple Ave. I'm a lifelong, fourth-generation resident of Andover, and I am the Chair of the Spring Grove Cemetery Board of Trustees. Before I begin, I'd like to take a minute to remind you of the Spring Grove Cemetery mission statement. Do you have that up? The trustees and the staff of Spring Grove Cemetery are committed to providing a serene, attractive, and contemplative setting for the families of the deceased. The trustees are here tonight to ask for your support of Article 82, which will prohibit dogs at Spring Grove Cemetery. The reason this has become an issue is because over the last few years, the trustees have witnessed an increase of dogs in the cemetery, and incidents of dogs urinating on headstones, defecating at gravesites, and disrupting the general tranquility of the cemetery, including funeral services. For a couple of examples, one incident occurred when myself and another trustee were meeting at the front entrance with a member of the Design Review Board to discuss our new entrance sign. A man entered the cemetery with his dog. He walked to the first headstone, right next to where we were all standing, and he allowed his dog to urinate on it. He then let his dog off of its leash and continued walking through the cemetery. The trustees feel it is incredibly disrespectful for a dog to urinate or defecate on a grave, even if it's picked up after, and even if the dog is on a leash. I personally witnessed a graveside service that was interrupted by dogs barking, and the dogs were on leashes. It is not okay for this to happen, not even once. No one's funeral should ever be disrupted by dogs. Having a dog on a leash will not stop that. Last week, at a public meeting, a woman told us that she is a professional dog walker, and she brings her clients' dogs to the cemetery. Another dog walker told a trustee that he brings his dogs to the cemetery to give them a bath. On any weekend day, there will be up to 10 or 12 cars parked in the cemetery with dog walkers. The trash barrels are filled with bags of dog waste. Dogs do not go to the bathroom on the pavement, they go on the grass. And once you just take a few steps off of the grass, you're now on someone's gravesite. There are over 4,000 gravesites at Spring Grove Cemetery, and more than 25% of them, over 1,200, are veterans. Prohibiting dogs is common sense and appropriate. Dogs are prohibited in the overwhelming majority of cemeteries, more than 90%, including most in the area. For example, North Andover, Havre, Groveland, Methuen, Tewksbury, Redding, North Redding, Wilmington, Lynnfield, Middleton, and some other well-known cemeteries such as Mount Auburn Cemetery in Cambridge, and Arlington National Cemetery in Washington, D.C. Why is this? Because simply, a cemetery is sacred ground. It's not an appropriate place for a dog to do its business. There are many other places in town to walk a dog. The cemetery should not be that place. The town has over 3,000 acres of open space of protected land with established trails for recreation. The cemetery happens to be located directly between two of them, the Recreation Park on one side, and Avis's Stanley Reservation on the other, both of which are much more appropriate places to walk a dog. The trustees voted unanimously to prohibit dogs in the cemetery and posted signs to that effect in February. Since the signs were posted, they have been vandalized numerous times. They've been spray painted over, they've been broken, and they've been stolen. Also, some dog walkers are ignoring the signs and are continuing to walk their dogs in the cemetery. Passing this bylaw will allow the no-dogs-allowed rule to be enforced. We should not allow Spring Grove Cemetery to turn into a dog park. Before you decide on your vote tonight, please ask yourself these questions. Would you think it is okay for a dog, leashed or unleashed, to urinate or defecate on or near your loved one's grave? And would you think it is okay for a dog, leashed or unleashed, if it disrupted your loved one's funeral service? And wouldn't you expect that those in charge of the cemetery would make sure that that doesn't happen? Out of respect for everyone, we are asking for your support in honoring this sacred ground by voting yes on Article 82 to prohibit dogs in Spring Grove Cemetery. Thank you for your time.
Okay, those of you who are at the point of order, you would have 30 seconds for a question. Okay, go ahead.
Madam Moderator, Diane DeLucia, Tewksbury Street.
Yes, Diane.
I have a question that I would like to address to the Chief of Police, if I may.
Sure. Chief, could you get to a mic, please?
Chief Keefe, Spring Grove Cemetery is public land and already covered by Andover's very extensive 16-point dog bylaw. Per the bylaw, first-time violations are punishable by a fine. How many fines related to the dog bylaw have you issued for Spring Grove Cemetery in the last five years?
I don't have that data right now, sorry.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, sir. Ma'am, whoever's the first one there, go ahead.
Thank you, I'm a Madam Moderator. My name is Paul Floyd, 80 Spring Grove Road. My wife Bonnie and I have been walking our dog Abby in Spring Grove Cemetery for the past 15 years since moving to Andover. It is a beautiful, serene, and contemplative space respectfully enjoyed by many residents of Andover. Most of the walkers in Spring Grove Cemetery are, in fact, dog walkers. We see two types of dog walkers when we walk in Spring Grove Cemetery. Those like us, who walk on the miles of roads that circle the cemetery, keeping our dogs leashed next to us as we walk, and plot owners, who bring their dogs with them to visit their deceased loved ones. I talked to several veterans recently who said that they have a plot at Spring Grove Cemetery. One of them said that when he dies, he wants his family to bring his dog to visit his gravesite. One thing is clear, is that there is, number one, a significant difference in opinion between the trustees and Spring Grove Cemetery neighborhood walkers on how serious the issues have been regarding dogs. Number two, there's a strong difference in views on what it means to respect the dignity of those interned in the cemetery. And number three, there's a high level of alienation by many residents in the community who feel that they have been frozen out of various discussions over the past year regarding this ban. The first time my wife Bonnie and I found out about the dog walker ban was when the signs went up at the cemetery entrance in January. We were shocked, as there had been no prior communications or discussion about a ban. We learned later the cemetery trustees had voted on the ban five months earlier at a meeting not attended by any other residents of Andover. I ask you to encourage the open community discussion that should have happened prior to Time Town Meeting by voting no on a ban. Instead of a ban, we should have an open dialogue to ensure that the current Andover dog bylaws are followed and address any specific areas of concern. As just pointed out, the current Andover dog bylaws are quite strict, and the fines were increased significantly on Tuesday night with the passage of Article 50. First-time violation is $75, and it goes up to $150. We need to work together to assure adherence instead of taking away the wonderful privilege of residents who daily enjoy the serenity of Spring Grove Cemetery. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Yes. Go right ahead. Up there, a pro-mic.
I'm Donna Cooper for Eagle Way. I'm here tonight as a mother of an infant daughter who's buried at Spring Grove Cemetery. I hope I can do this. I don't know how many dog walkers have a loved one buried at Spring Grove, but I, for one, support the dog-walking ban in the cemetery. When I visit my daughter's grave, I want it to be quiet and clean. I go there to remember and to mourn. I feel strongly that it is appropriate to ask the cemetery be maintained as a quiet space for contemplation and grief for our town. There are many other places in Andover to walk your dogs. Please vote to keep the cemetery a place of serenity and quiet, and support the cemetery trustees' decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Question?
Yes, a question, Madam Moderator.
Go right ahead.
Bob Willard, 76 Tewksbury Street. Since this question is a change to the bylaws, is a two-thirds vote required?
No, it's just a majority vote.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Pat Scanlon. I'm a Vietnam veteran. I'm also a member of Veterans of Foreign War, Vietnam Veterans of America, and I'm the past president of Veterans for Peace for the greater Boston area. When I first read this article, I was a little baffled and confused. That cemetery has been there 150 years, and why is it now, in 2017, that we are addressing a question about dogs when dogs have been allowed in there for 150 years? And people have been allowed to walk in there with their families, and with their grandchildren, and whatever the case may be. It is a serene, it's a beautiful place, and I've been in that cemetery many times. To me, a cemetery where veterans are buried is a very sacred ground. I was in Vietnam in 1969. I'm a graduate of the United States Army Intelligence School. I was at MACVI headquarters in Saigon. For 47 years since I came back from Vietnam, every Memorial Day, which is a very sacred day to me, I'm in some cemetery. And I've been, and as Veterans for Peace, we have our own event in Boston, but I've been in the cemetery in Andover many times for the events, as we go early in the morning to the different cemeteries, and we end up at Cedar Grove Cemetery. And all I can do is just say what my experience has been in that cemetery. One, it is peaceful, it is serene, and people who go there on Memorial Day are very respectful. You have a nice event, many of the selectmen and other town officials go to the event. You have the Andover Band plays, and then there's taps, there's a laying of the wreaths. And I can't think of a time that I was there that I didn't see residents walking in the cemetery, and many with dogs, that will stop and pay respectful attention to what is taking place in the cemetery. So, I strongly, I think that the people that are, and the veterans that are below ground, I think they would appreciate the liveliness above ground, and to have the dogs, and people, and children, you know, in that space as well. It's a communal area, it's one of the most beautiful areas in Andover, and I strongly support that, you know, that dogs be allowed, and residents be allowed to continue, to participate, and to use that space.
Thank you.
And one other thing, in the entire time I've been going to that cemetery, I have never seen any disrespect, I've never seen any dogs off the leash, and I've never seen anything left behind that wasn't picked up.
Thank you, sir.
That's just my personal opinion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And before we finish, sir, sir, thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Over here, please.
My name is Aline Raleigh, 2 College Circle. Madam Moderator, I would like to tell you about my experiences in the cemetery as well. I would like to pay it forward. Let's pay it forward and make sure that the people we leave behind us have the same fine resting place to come to that we had, and that it is in the same pristine condition, because we owe it to the people that went before us, and to ourselves and our children. I walk in the Spring Grove Cemetery in every season, and this is what I see on my walks. In the springtime, I see the graves with new flower arrangements. They are neatly placed and waiting for Memorial Day. There are artifacts placed on the headstones that have been carefully chosen, maybe from a vacation taken when you brought back a seashell, or you took a long time to find that perfect rock that is nicely polished and smooth. I see somebody left a basket of tennis balls because they love to play tennis, or I see a golf ball. People bring balloons on a birthday, probably their favorite color, or the balloon has pictures of it of footballs and soccer balls that sway in the breeze, and the color catches your eye as you walk past. I see headstones with popular action figures placed in front, or a little tiny fairy pixie, or a stone bunny. Sometimes you see a stuffed teddy bear, and you know a child is buried there, or you see a little stone angel praying. Someone hung a chalkboard on a headstone and wrote a message saying some personal words that only they would understand. There are small flags hanging from a shepherd's hook with a team logo as remembrance of the games they used to go to. I walk in the wintertime around holiday season, and I see a Christmas tree decorated with tinsel and silver balls. There are wreaths placed on the headstones, and the families are going to be celebrating with them. There are red poinsettias and small ornaments that have been possibly handmade. I walk in the autumn and watch the colors of the trees change, and know that another year is coming to an end, and read some of the passages on the stones that say, "Until we meet again," or "Love is eternal," or "May God hold you in the palm of His hand," or "Semper fidelis," or somewhere over the rainbow. Let's not forget our veterans who may have given the ultimate sacrifice, and those who are willing to die for us. Each and every one has an American flag next to his or her name. These are men and women who have proudly served the United States military. This is how they showed respect for their country. Let's pay it forward and show respect and gratitude for them, and keep what we hold dear to us. This is the only place we have in Andover for our loved ones. Others who want to take it away from us have the whole town.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Susan Hoffman. I live at 22 Spring Grove Road. I am not a regular dog walker in the cemetery, but as a voter and a neighbor, I am concerned and I'm confused by this proposed ban. I don't understand why it is being pushed through without any dialogue with the affected community, especially the people who own plots in the cemetery or have loved ones buried there. I recently lost my father. He was an amazing man who loved life, and it was important to us that he be buried in a place where a positive energy surrounded him. We specifically chose a cemetery where people do walk their dogs, and parents teach kids to ride their bikes, because we know that is what he would want. This brings us great comfort, because my father is alone there. We don't want him in a desolate, empty place. We would be devastated to find out that dog walkers were no longer allowed in his cemetery. So I don't understand how you can ask us to vote for this ban without first consulting all the families who own plots and have loved ones buried there. I know there are some plot owners who don't like having dog walkers there, but what about all the plot owners who haven't been asked, and who may not even know about this proposed ban? This is the exact community that the commission's mission directs it to serve, the committee's mission, I'm sorry. And at the very least, it is inconsistent with that mission to impose a ban without their input. Andover residents have been walking their dogs in the cemetery for almost 150 years. Every family who chose Spring Grove knew that dogs were allowed. The rules are prominently displayed. How many of them chose this beautiful place for the same reasons we chose my father's resting place, and relied upon the fact that it is a place with life and a community presence above ground? How many of them chose Spring Grove because their families could bring their dog to visit them at their grave? We don't know, because no one has asked them, and yet you are asking us to ban dogs on their behalf. Also, as someone who lives directly across the street from the cemetery, I am concerned that the committee did no research whatsoever on the safety implications of banning dog walkers, and refused to even meet with neighbors when asked. In our neighborhood, many of us know about the teenagers looking to use the cemetery as a place to drink, smoke, and party, and the presence of dog walkers are the reason they don't stay. This is not Arlington National Cemetery. There are no security guards at Spring Grove at night. There are not even any lights, it is pitch black in the air at sunset. If you kick out this community of residents, you are leaving the cemetery open to vandals. What vetting has been done to protect the residents who live in this part of town from the consequences of this ban? It is irresponsible to not address these issues before asking us to vote. Before being asked to make a change to something that has been in place for 146 years, Andover voters deserve transparency and vetting. Providing anecdotal stories that contradict each other and random lists of cemeteries that do and don't allow banner dogs is not vetting. I expect that the committee would have spoken to the cemetery custodians, the neighbors, and most importantly, the families, all the families of those buried in the cemetery. And none of that has happened.
Point of order, please. Thank you. Point of order. No, we're going to go around, please, Donna first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Kathy Romano. I am a 25-year veteran myself. I'm speaking for the American Legion in Andover, as well as the Disabled American Veterans in Lawrence in Andover. I stand before you, the town of Andover, and I ask you to vote yes for the approval of Warren 82. Over 25% of Spring Grove is where our fallen comrades are buried. 98% of veteran cemeteries do not allow dogs in cemeteries, to include all of the Massachusetts Veteran Cemeteries and our National Cemetery in Washington, D.C. As a dog owner myself and a dog lover, uh, hold on, dogs must relieve themselves. More specifically, male dogs will relieve themselves on a gravestone to mark their territory. They cannot help it, it is what dogs do, and do do. While we know all pet owners intend no disrespect to our veterans, pets on cemetery grounds can and have impacted the decorum of both funeral services and grounds, as well as the gravestones themselves. We have heard from others who have complained about the dog droppings in town parks and conservation trails. I know that most dog owners are respectful of others. There are those few who feel that their right is to let their dogs go wherever they want and not clean it up, and that is not right. This is why the trustees are asking to support, asking you to support Warren 82. This is not an exaggeration of a minor issue. The trustees have seen an increase in dogs over the past five years, to the point where it has become a community park. The cemetery is not a community park. The cemetery is a place to mourn and honor the dead, to bury those we love and have lost, to pay our respects, to pray, to meditate, and to remember. It is a place of solitude and honor, a place of peace and respect. Andover is blessed, I'm sorry, with acres of parks and conservation land, and that is where our dogs can walk. Lastly, and most importantly, a few years back, I spoke at a Memorial Day, and I gave a speech, and the speech had to do with an obligation to remember. We have to remember our World War II veterans, our Vietnam veterans and what they went through, our wars in Syria, Iraq, and Afghanistan. We have obligation to teach. What are we teaching our children when we talk about dogs in the cemeteries, when we teach about riding bicycles in the cemetery? That's not what cemeteries are for. I ask you, as citizens, to vote yes to 82, so we can teach our young people to show respect for the deceased and the veterans who served and gave their lives for our nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. I'm going to ask you, please, if you could please respect the 30-second warning, and then, I don't want to be rude and just cut you off, but there are so many people who want to speak, I'm going to end up starting to do that. Go right ahead, sir.
I have one quick question.
Go right ahead, sir. Tell us who you are, because there are three people here that don't know.
David Riley, Summer Street.
Thank you, David.
Hopefully still the town treasurer, I'm not sure of your earlier comments.
I know, you know.
If I passed away tomorrow, could I be buried up at the dog park up on High Plain Road?
No Methuen.
You know, the family's discussing that tonight, I think, David.
I would assume if the answers are no, then maybe we should keep the dog park for the dogs, and we'll keep the cemetery for the deceased people.
Okay, what's your question? Was that it?
That was it.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's John Moore, 11 Acropolis Circle here in Andover.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Lady Moderator. Thank you, citizens of Andover. I would like to first say that I have the utmost respect for the Spring Grove Cemetery, and understand our duty as good citizens and neighbors to honor and respect that space. I would never condone any resident walking a dog off-leash, or allowing a dog to defile a tombstone. But let me be clear, we got to Article 82 because there's a perception that dogs gone wild is a common occurrence in Spring Grove Cemetery, where residents use the cemetery as a dog park, where dogs run free and do their business with nobody cleaning up after them. This perception couldn't be further than the truth. The truth is, residents have used Spring Grove Cemetery since the end of the Civil War, and each generation, in its turn, have been the daily stewards of that space. My wife and I have been walking in that cemetery for over 15 years, and she walks there almost every morning with our dog. We live past South School, and because there are very few sidewalks nearby, the cemetery provides a safe place to walk. I can tell you that 99, I can tell you that 99% of people who walk their dogs do so quietly, on a leash, and with respect for the families whose loved ones are buried there. We turn the other direction when we see visitors at gravesites. We exit the cemetery when a funeral or ceremony is taking place. I have never seen anyone allow their dog to defile a gravesite. In all this time, we have witnessed only one resident who let her dog run unleashed. My wife and her friends called that person out and told her to stop, and I believe that is one of the four incidences that have been reported to the Andover Police in the last five years. Let me repeat, there have only been four incidences in the last five years reported to the Andover Police about Spring Grove Cemetery. You can check the facts. The facts do not support the dogs-gone-wild assertion. The cemetery trustees have offered no proof, no photos, no videos, no corroborative evidence, just anecdotal comments that have never been verified or reported to the police. Rather than developing a collaborative solution with community input, the trustees have chosen the nuclear option. They voted to ban dogs completely and forever. With no hard evidence, how can we overturn almost 150 years of precedence and accept this recommendation? What has changed that would cause dogs not to be permitted in this beautiful public space? Those of us that have family plots in Spring Grove Cemetery have always known dogs were part of the cemetery community. We bought our plots with that knowledge, and we would have chosen another cemetery if it bothered us. I urge you to look at the facts and vote to preserve access for Andover residents. Vote no on Article 82.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Moderator. So much for the 30-second rule.
Yeah, sir, he was at the con mic.
I understand that.
Okay.
You gave him a lot of 30-second wax. Thank you. Anyway...
I started 45 seconds before his time was up.
Yeah. When I was a boy, my parents taught me to respect the cemetery and each and every grave. I was taught to never walk on another family's grave. I carry this with me today. When I think of people walking their dogs in the cemetery, I think, why are they there? A nice stroll for the owners, and a toilet for the dogs. I'm sure most of these people have lawns, but of course, they don't want their dogs urinating or defecating on their own lawns. So let's go to the cemetery. When I was in the Marine Corps Band, I had... When I was in the Marine Corps Band, I had to play at cemeteries in respect for our dead veterans. At these events, there were two ends of the spectrum, the jolting sounds of a 21-gun salute and the incredible sadness of three trumpets playing taps. I can only tell you that keeping my emotions intact so as to get through the score without an error was very difficult. A great reminder to me of the honor and respect our veterans and our family members deserve. I go twice a day to my family member's grave. Can't get through that. I don't want a dog urinating or otherwise disrespecting my loved one. Each stone you see represents deeded property owned by the families and is private property. It is not public property. I have a deed to eight graves in that cemetery. It's my property. The dead can't speak toward this article, but I can speak for myself, who will be buried at Spring Grove sooner than a lot of you. I do not want dogs doing their business on my grave. The trustees of Spring Grove are good and caring people who volunteer a great deal of their time to implement their mission statement, to provide a serene, attractive, and contemplative setting for the families and the deceased. That's it, I guess.
Thank you, sir.
I do, I would like to say that we have owned three dogs. We've been here 40 years. We've had three dogs. Never took the dogs to the cemetery. In fact, I've never let any one of my dogs urinate or defecate on anyone's lawn. Okay? I'd always get to a point.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
There wasn't a lawn.
Yes, sir.
John Coleman, High Street. I want all of us to remember, over 20 years ago.
No, your point, your point of order or your question, or you need to get more.
I want to have equal time to this gentleman and everybody else here, please.
No, at that, at that, Mike, you get 30 seconds.
Well, I'll go down.
Okay. Yes, sir. This is point of order right here. Go ahead.
Paul Floyd, 80, Spring Grove. I have a question for the selectmen and town manager. Have any of you asked the cemetery staff if there is a dog problem at Spring Grove Cemetery?
We've had discussions with our staff as we do approaching any issue in any function of town government, and there's differing opinions based on personal interpretation of what constitutes a problem. So have we had a dialogue? Yes.
With the cemetery staff?
I've had the discussion through our Director of Municipal Services, who oversees the cemetery division.
So have you had a discussion directly with the cemetery staff?
I personally have not, no.
Have any of the selectmen had a discussion directly with the cemetery staff? Mr. Landry.
Okay. Any other questions, sir?
Can we hear from Mr. Landry?
Go ahead, Mr. Landry.
I spoke today with cemetery staff, a member, Chris McQuade. I called over asking for some information. He happened to pick up the phone, and I thanked him for a letter that he submitted to the Board of Selectmen today, or that was submitted that he had provided, which opposes Article 82. And if I could, just briefly, this employee wrote to the Board of Selectmen.
No, I won't let you read that, sir, unless he's here. Is he here? Is Chris here?
Just a point of order, ma'am. It, yes, but it is.
If he's not here to, for the, for the meeting to question him, I won't let you read into the meeting his letter.
Okay, even though, even though it's a public record?
Even though it's a public record, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman, go ahead. I'm sorry, sir.
High Street, Andover. I come from a funeral director family, and I've witnessed on two occasions, one particular woman with a lifeguard's whistle. And you know how I know that? Because I had to run after her and ask her to cease and desist, and I said, where did you get that whistle? She said, I used to be a lifeguard at Salisbury Beach. But she did not have her dog on a leash. She interrupted our services, and we try to serve the valley with humility and humbleness, and most of all, comforting those in need. And I'm asking you tonight to comfort those people and all of you public servants on the deck today. You have a fiduciary responsibility under Massachusetts general laws. Many of us, I, I, one last thing.
Now, I'm gonna ask you to address this article.
I am addressing this article.
Not lecture the stage.
No, I'm just saying, many of us, like you and me, do not have children, and we will not be able to place geraniums on the graves, we will not be able to maintain them, but we pay for a deed in that cemetery.
Somebody will do that on mine, won't you?
One minute.
Somebody will do that, won't you?
No. But we pay for a deed to have perpetual care, and that's very important under the law to make sure that this cemetery remains beautiful and respectful. And that's what I'm asking tonight. We are asking for respect of the dead. Every one of us should be able to die in peace, and we will not, if we continue to let people who do not respect our cemetery break the law and in many cases, not use leashes and do whatever they want in that cemetery.
Yes, sir.
I am asking you tonight to support this, to not allow dogs, any other pets, to go in that cemetery and to have respect for the dead, please. Thank you.
Somebody want to second that? All those in favor of ending discussion, please raise one hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, we'll end discussion. If you'll take your seats, we'll take a vote. If you'll take your seats, please, we'll take a vote. This requires a majority vote. We'll see if we can do this on site. I'm just waiting for everyone to get to their seat. All those in favor of Article 82, please raise one hand. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise one hand. I think the opposition has it, but let's take a count. All those in favor of 82, please stand.
Look to your counter, please, and sit as he makes eye contact with you. Section 1, please.
Section 1, 19.
19. Section 2. I'm sorry, you ready, George?
Section 2, 27.
27. Section 3.
Section 3, 3.
3. Section 4.
Section 4, 33. 3-3.
33. Section 5.
Section 5, 30. 3-0.
3-0. Section 6.
Section 6, 23. 2-3.
2-3. Section 7 is empty. Section 8, please.
Section 8, Rodney Dangerfield, Section 1.
And on, and the hall, please.
Hall, 6.
6. And the stage.
Gal, gal.
I'm upstage. I don't know where.
8.
8 on the stage.
All right. All those, do you have a point of order, sir?
I do. I have a, just a general question to the rules that you stated when we first got in here, that what each microphone was for. That gentleman over there came over here and waited a little while. There were three, excuse me, there were people waiting there to talk pro. You let him walk down there and take their spot.
I did, sir.
So now the people that were waiting longer than he was.
Sir.
Were not allowed to speak. So I'm just trying to understand who has right of the way. He spoke every five minutes to get up there.
It would have been his turn to speak, but for, it wasn't a point of order, so that's why I let him speak.
Right, but then you let him go to the front of the line over there.
I understand, and I apologize if that upset you.
Okay, we're done.
Thank you. All those opposed to Article 82, please stand. Once he's counted, your vote?
Section 1, please.
Section 1, 13.
13. Section 2.
Section 2, 4-0. 40.
4-0. Section 3.
Section 3, 6.
6. Section 4, George.
Section 4, 81. 8-1.
Section 81. Section 5.
Section 5, 39. 3-9.
39. Section 6.
Section 6 is 53. 5-3.
53. Nobody in 7. Section 8.
Section 8, 5.
5. On, in the hall.
Hall, 5.
Got it. And the stage, please.
Stage is 12. 1-2.
Stage is 12.
Those voting in the affirmative were 150. Those in the negative were 254. The motion is lost. Article 83, please. Mr. Salafia.
Yes, Madam Moderator, I move to approve, to approve Article 83 as printed in the warrant.
Article 83 has been moved and seconded. Who's speaking to this?
This is simply related bylaw to Article 82, which would simply allow the walking of dogs at Spring Grove.
Does anybody have anything new to add to the discussion? This is the opposite of 82.
May I move the question?
Well, let's see if anybody has anything they would like to say. Thank you. Sir, go ahead. Why don't you start? You're pro this? Do you want, okay. Do you want to get to this mic? Go ahead, Michael. Michael. Mr. Hamm, go ahead.
Yes, Bill Hamm, Wildwood Road. I just have a question to our town manager. As I read the article, it talks about removal of waste from dogs. Am I correct?
Correct. So the existing bylaw, as it relates to the proper disposal of dog waste, would remain in effect.
Unless you have technology I'm not aware of, I suggest you change that to solid
Could we have this mic on down here, please? Go ahead.
Madam Moderator.
You can turn that mic, I think, if you need to. There you go.
My name is, my name is Patrick Donahue, and I live at 15 Channel Circle.
Patrick Donahue.
My wife, myself, and our three children moved here in February of 1991, and I have lived in Andover for 26 years. I'm a veteran of the United States Air Force. I'm a physician and anesthesiologist, and I served as a major in the United States Air Force Medical Corps. On the morning of December 20th, 1989, the United States invaded Panama. Very soon thereafter, those injured and wounded, some almost directly from the battlefield, were flown to San Antonio, Texas for treatment. For three days, the planes landed, and the hospital stopped its usual activities and just cared for and operated on and re-operated on these men. They were from the Army and the Navy, and some had been very seriously wounded. When I left the service, I received the United States Air Force Commendation Medal, and I am very, very proud of this and the citation that accompanied it. Soon after leaving the service, I came to Andover. When I came to Andover, I was a runner, and over the years, with friends, I have run over most of the streets in this town. I am now a jogger, and every Saturday morning for the last 12 years or more, regardless of the season or the weather, a group of us meet on Main Street to run. One of us has a dog and comes with us every week. We run through much of the town, and every other month at a minimum, we run through the Spring Grove Cemetery. We have done this for years. I want to say emphatically that the cemetery is not a wash and excrement, that it has not been run over by wild dogs, and that graves have not been defiled. This issue of dog waste in the cemetery is a non-issue. Nothing has changed over the years, and I have been there over the years. I want to assure my fellow veterans that the graves are clean and state that we have all been subjected to gross exaggeration and hyperbole. My son is in the Navy. He went in after graduating from college in 2004. He has been sent to all of the places our country has sent our young men in the last 13 years. He has served valiantly, and he continues to do so. He is also a runner and a dog owner, and when he comes home to visit, we go out with his dog, and we run together, and we talk. These are very special times for a father, a time that he can share with his son. I would like to think that when I am gone and my son returns to Andover to visit his friends, that he could lace up his sneakers, leash up his dog, come down to the cemetery so we could have another talk.
Thank you, sir. And thank you to you and your family for your service. Yes, sir, point of order?
Yes, point of order. Dan Gillett, Walcott Out. The trustees already took a vote on this. The legalities, the town council, how does this, how does this work out? No, we vote, or we just dump it off in the Attorney General to make the decision?
Well, the Attorney General will review any approval that's taken place, but if there's a bylaw that is passed with regard to the cemetery, that would take precedent, that would take precedence over the vote of the trustees.
So if a skateboard club came in next year at the town meeting, they could overrule the trustees?
The Attorney General will review the legality. If this passes, the Attorney General would review it to be consistent with state law. If she approves it, that would take precedence over the vote that the cemetery trustees took.
Anybody up there in the con? Go right ahead, sir. Pro? Is there anybody in the con mics? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Mike Myers, South Main Street, Andover.
Michael, go ahead.
I'm very pleased to be here this evening, and welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I would just like to clarify some survey information regarding cemetery policies. There are seven cemeteries in the town of Andover. Kreitz Church, South Church, St. Augustine's, West Parish, Chapel Ave. at Phillips Academy, St. Francis, and the Spring Grove Cemetery. All seven have very similar statements, mission statements regarding contemplation and serenity. All seven welcome veterans and their families. And six out of the seven welcome respectful dog walking. Only the public cemetery does not allow dog walking, and it is not a veteran cemetery. It is a public cemetery. We did a survey. We looked at the United States Geological Association of 131 cemeteries located in Essex County. The vast majority allow dog walking. So as Joe Biden would say, malarkey. Okay? So let's move on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a con up there? Go ahead.
Yes, Diana Kiran from One Napier Road. If I'm understanding this correctly, the last amendment was to disallow dogs, and this is to expressly allow them. And I would just suggest that maybe we agree to disagree on this issue and not adopt either one. We just go with the regular town bylaws where it sounds like these rules already exist in keeping out dogs. I do know, I live right I do know, I live right across the street from Merrimack College, and I do know that they have had to remove a bunch of their trash cans because there's too many dog walkers dumping all their stuff in there, and I believe that everyone here picks up after their dog, but not, we routinely take extra bags with us to Merrimack College because we find stuff that people don't pick up, and ninety-five percent of the town doesn't come to this meeting. I'm sure the dog owners here do clean up after their dogs. I don't know that that's true of all dog owners, though.
Thank you. Michael, do you have a point of order?
Yes, I hope so.
Go ahead.
My, my point has to do with Mike Rowley, College Circle. I'm sorry, what did you want? I gave it. Mike Rowley, College Circle.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My problem with the dogs in the cemetery has to do with enforcement. Who is going to enforce this leash law, you know, ensuring that everybody's doing the right thing? And the answer to that, at this moment, as far as I'm concerned, is no one, because I go there twice a day, as I've stated. I've only seen a police car in the cemetery once in a, in a year.
With all due respect, I need what your point of order is.
Well, my point of order is, who's going to maintain, make sure?
Who's going to be responsible for enforcing this?
Enforcing it. That's right.
Who's going to be responsible?
Enforcement authority. I have a second question, but go ahead.
Falls under the jurisdiction of the Andover Police Department.
Well.
Go ahead.
If they're not doing their job, then I have, I guess I have to say, and I don't like saying that, because I like them. But my second point is that I have been there. I've seen dog walkers walk across from going from one section to another with their dogs, cutting over lawns. I've seen dog walkers have twenty-five-foot-long leashes, and they're not even paying attention to the fact that their dog is on the graves and they're out there on the road. I saw, I've seen, I saw a person dump their.
Again, you're giving a position statement. You're not asking a point of order or a question.
No, I'm just trying, I'm making a point.
No, a point of order.
There was nobody there but me.
Okay.
Okay? There's nobody to enforce these rules that you say are in, you know, enforced now.
Thank you. Sir, down here?
Al Hoffman, twenty-two Spring Grove Road.
Yes, Al.
I live across the street from the cemetery, twenty-two Spring Grove, and my wife and children and I have walked there thousands of times in the last twelve years, without a dog for eleven of the twelve years. We have never seen an incident of disrespect or someone not picking up after their dog. To the contrary, we've seen walkers pick up bits of trash along the way. I've seen them replace and straighten flags. My father and uncle were World War II vets who served in North Africa, Sicily, and Italy. I've worked in VAA hospitals. No one in this room has more respect for veterans than I do. I didn't serve, but nobody has more respect than I do. And when I walk into the cemetery with my son, we continue to straighten and replace flags. I would be disgusted and outraged if veterans' graves, really any grave, was desecrated or disrespected by dogs, but the fact is that this is not an issue at Spring Grove Cemetery, and the caretakers confirm that. Banning dogs would have kept law-abiding, respectful stewards of the cemetery out. So I applaud the citizens of Andover for, for not passing eighty-two, as that would have continued to allow dogs, people who walk their dogs off-leash, and those who are less respectful, to continue to come, because that's the way the world works. And you have to be careful with people who make broad statements like it's disrespectful to bring dogs into the cemetery. I know a veteran whose father, who's another veteran, is buried at Spring Grove. He knows his father, who always owned a dog, and many of the other vets would like knowing that dogs are in the cemetery. The trustees did not survey citizens prior to enacting the ban. Otherwise, they would have found dozens of people with loved ones buried in the cemetery or with plans to be buried in the cemetery who desperately want to keep the cemetery dog, open to dog walkers. And that wouldn't have just been a good suggestion to have the trustees survey and connect with people who own plots. That's really in their charge, you know? Reading from the mission statement, somebody read from that to open this discussion of eighty-two, what was left off was that the trustees should work in a dignified manner with respect to the wishes and beliefs of the deceased and their family. That includes people who like dogs. So we should have at least been included in that conversation.
Are you ready to vote?
Point of order, madam. Point of order, madam.
Can I please ask if there is a consensus among the meeting to end discussion? Please raise your hand. Thank you. Those who want to keep discussion going? Clearly, there's an overwhelming majority. If you could take your seats, please, we'll take a vote. This is a majority vote. I don't know if we're going to need to do a standing count.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
Gail Ralston, forty-four Linwood Street, Spring Grove Cemetery trustee. Twice I was at, Mike, this is the second time, wanting to speak. This is neither a pro nor a con comment, but a comment and a commitment that I would like to make if you, if town meeting would indulge me.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going out on a limb here, but I believe in town meeting. I believe in the process. While I'm certainly disappointed with the vote, I have thought through what I would do in the eventuality of this result, and I am committing myself to respecting town meeting's vote, and I look forward to beginning and establishing a regular discussion amongst the neighbors and anyone else interested in the, the, I can't think of the word, in the business of the Spring Grove Cemetery. Please, I hope we get back to a civil discussion on this issue. I so look forward to, and because it's town meeting, I believe this can happen.
Gail, thank you for your comments. I'm not sure, I'm not sure the bulk of this meeting understands the courage that that woman just took, given the last several months. Thank you, Gail. Okay. This is going to be the last article. I'm sure, I'm sure I've stepped on toes during this last three nights, and I apologize for those. It's difficult sometimes. Some people thought this wasn't my finest hour. Other people sent me flowers because they thought it was such a finest hour, so probably I did okay. But I want you to know that I still believe strongly in this process, and I appreciate all of you for coming out, the thousand nineteen that we had on Tuesday night and the eight-hundred-and-eighty that we had on Monday night. Town meeting is alive and well in Andover. All right, let's take this final vote. Selectman's recommendation on Article eighty-three, please.
Selectman voted to disapprove Article eighty-two.
Thank you.
Eighty-three, I'm sorry.
Eighty-three.
Sorry.
Okay, all those in favor of Article eighty-three, please raise one hand. Thank you. Those opposed? It's very clear, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Mr. Erbleth?